Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 24th, 2024 meeting of the Hyde Park Hearing, the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Just for your safety, because we have a raucous crowd today, just for exits, you know we're doing a little construction here, so if you need to get out for popcorn or emergencies, the door you came in, but also you can go out either of these doors and turn left, and there's an exit door down there. So, just so you're appraised of that, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate your coming. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with old business. We had a motion for Anderson, but we have been delayed. Counsel, do you have a comment on that?
Yes. Hi, this is the representative for the project.
Good evening.
Aye.
So, the Seeker review has not yet been completed in the planning board, who are lead agency on this application, and the board has closed the public hearing on this matter. So we are now under the 62-day time limitation in order to make a determin-
You can't hear!
We are now under the 62-day time limitation in which to make a determination on the project. I believe the applicant did send a written consent to extend that time until the Seeker review is complete.
Yes.
And we will adjust the board's vote once that occurs.
If we need to expedite the vote, we will. We're prepared to move as soon as we get that finished. Very good. We have no objections, and good. We helped work with the planning board, and we hope to see you next month.
I don't know if it'll be next month.
Okay, okay. All right. We can carry on that activity without you showing up.
We'll be here.
We'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing on Dupree, on 30 Curry Lane, Hyde Park, looking for a variance. I would move for a, to open the public hearing. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Mr. Dupree.
Chairman and Counselor.
Would you tell us a little bit about your project?
The house was built in, somewhere in the 1860s. There's conflicting reports inside the town planning office, but it was built, there was no Curry Lane, there was just River Road. Back in the day, in the 1860s, they put your house right in the road. Now with modern setbacks, I only have 10 feet of my kitchen and 10 feet of the bedroom above it that are within, that are complying and conforming with the setback requirements for a side yard. So anything we do at the house, I've been to this board before for building permits for anything. In this case, being fully candid, we bought a generator four years ago, and it's been sitting there ever since because my husband finally said, "You're like the doctor's kid bleeds, that why you tape others." So I finally put the application in, thankfully with Kathleen's help. So it's been four years it's been sitting there. At any rate, it's going to an area that's screened the best and also the closest to River Road for deliveries, but that means it's going to be within the setback.
So it's within 10 feet of the property line along River Road?
We think so.
Yeah, and this is a second front setback? Is that correct?
I believe we have two front yard setbacks.
Two front setbacks.
Because I'm on Curry Lane and on River Road.
Correct. Okay. Any questions? Any questions, sir?
Nope.
Comments? None? Any other comments from the public on this? No? Yes, sir?
Can I stay here?
Yes.
Nope, sorry. If you could please come up and use the microphone.
Come up and use the microphone.
This'll be quick. I can't think of two homeowners who take more pride and concern in the look and aesthetics of their property as these two guys, so I'm sure it'll be per-
Thank you for your, thank you for your coming.
Paying my problems.
All right. I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have a resolution on this. Michael Fleischer and Michael Dupree, 30 Curry Lane, Hyde Park, New York, April 24th, 2024, Resolution 24-04Z. Whereas the applicant, Michael Fleischer and Michael Dupree, the property owners have submitted an application for an area variance to change the front yard setback on River Road to install a generator at the property located at 30 Curry Lane, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6065-04-563057. I have that memorized. In the waterfront district. Whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law, Section 108-515 Bulk Relations, to change the minimum from front yard setback from 50 feet to 7.5 feet for the installation of a generator associated with a single-family dwelling. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, Zoning Law Section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The generator will be located behind a wooden fence on the side of the property contiguous to River Road. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. An alternative location for the generator would require significant trenching to bedrock as well as the removal of trees and native shrubs. Number three, the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variances will change the permitted front yard setback from 50 to 7.5. However, the 159-year-old house is already located well within the current setback, and the generator will be adjacent to the house. The potential detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. Number four, the required variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The generator in the proposed location will not disrupt the existing trees and fauna on the property, nor will it create any new water management issues. And five, the difficulties are self-created. The property was purchased as is. Be it further resolved that the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to Section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. And number two, payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you take the poll award, please?
Yes, Paul Donnelly.
Yes.
Richard Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman David McNary.
Yes. Mr. Dupree, we look forward to your generator.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, distinguished board members. Thank you, Counselor. And as a note to the last application, so they need a new wastewater treatment facility for the new building, Gellinwood, and they didn't know that in advance. Jason over at Department of Health told them, so they have to revise the EAF to add up for areas of disturbance. That's why we're waiting on Seeker, and I apologize that we didn't get that out to you because I didn't advise you to close the public hearing. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. We are on to the third item on the agenda. This regards Ascini Land Holdings, 24-01Z, 2450 Route 9G, Hyde Park, Grid 626803461408, and it is appealed to deny the application for site plan approval for proposed development in the Green Belt Zoning District of the town of Hyde Park. Madam Chairman, Secretary, was, the public hearing was, notice was published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on April 17th, 2024.
Thank you. I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will just introduce ourselves very quick. Amy Argerakis. I'm Kelly Leibert with KARC Planning Consultants.
She is Kelly Leibert. I'm Victoria Polidoro, Wodenhausen, Charlotte Polidoro, here on behalf of CEC NY Land Holdings.
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we wanted to take a few minutes, maybe it'll be a few more than a few minutes, just to give you an overview of the project and the property, because I think this is the first time that you've had an introduction to this particular project.
Could you put the microphone a little closer, please? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
That's better, yes.
It just seems very in my space, but fine. As long as everyone's here.
Yeah.
Yep. We have a PowerPoint presentation so that the public can see us as we move along, and we've also provided you with paper copies, so you can follow along with the PowerPoint that we gave you. I did leave an extra copy for the one member that's absent, so that they can have a copy for the records.
Yeah. Do you want to turn this through the, toward the public a little more, so they can see? We have copy.
Let him.
Tony, yes, thank you, Tony.
Do you have to turn off the volume on the microphones because I'm sure there's people back there. They have to be loud and clear on this side. Is the volume controlled on this?
It says that it can reverberate and feedback. Just be, please.
Keep the microphone closed.
Yeah, keep the microphones closed, so everybody can hear.
Okay, so the property is a large parcel. This is a property that's located in the town of Hyde Park and the town of Clinton, and the portion of the property that's in the town of Clinton is, sorry, I'm like going back and forth and back and forth, is 228 acres. There is a very small portion of this project that is located in the town of Hyde Park, and it is 8.2 acres. The portion that is in the town of Hyde Park is in the Green Belt Zoning District. The portion that is in the town of Clinton, unrelated to this board, however, is in the AR3, AR5 zoning district. So the lion's share of this property is in the town of Clinton. Again, a very small portion that's in the town of Hyde Park.
And the zone that they have in Clinton is what?
AR3, AR5.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got it.
So this is just a map showing the zoning district for the town of Hyde Park, and you can see this property is very far, very far in the northern part of the town of Hyde Park, a small sliver of land, again, that's adjacent to the town of Clinton.
Mm-hmm.
The next slide just provides you with a list of the permitted uses in the town of Hyde Park. So again, this is in the Green Belt zoning district, and in the town of Hyde Park, camps are permitted uses, and commercial recreation and outdoor recreation are specially permitted uses. And we'll go through these later, we're just trying to lay the framework for the facts regarding the property. We did take excerpts from the town of Clinton zoning and the town of Hyde Park zoning, just so you had the definitions for each of these uses. I will not read the definition for Conference Center in the town of Clinton, I'm going to focus on the town of Hyde Park. In the town of Hyde Park, there is a use called Recreation Commercial, and so there are two types of commercial recreation in the town of Hyde Park. There's indoor recreation and outdoor recreation. So we're going to focus on the outdoor recreation. These are activities including but not limited to ball fields, playing fields, batting cages, golf courses, and driving ranges, tennis, racquetball courts, swimming, bike trails, hiking, and similar outdoor activities conducted on a commercial or fee basis. An outdoor recreational use may also include customary accessory uses in buildings, such as a clubhouse, food, food stands, offices, and other accessory and incidental to the outdoor commercial use. Outdoor recreation shall not include racetracks, go-karts, motorcycles, and other uses involving motorized vehicles. In the town of Hyde Park, you also have a use called Camp, and we will again get into some of the details of this, but a camp is a facility providing access, water, sanitary, and electrical services where persons are lodged for seasonal or temporary period of time, less than six months, for recreation or instructional purposes. So those are just the facts about the property, where it's located, and the zoning and the acreages. So, the project. The first slide that you'll see is just a map of the existing conditions, and you can see this is a very large parcel. The bottom of your drawing, the bottom of your page, is Route 9G. The top of the page, obviously, is the upper portion of this particular property. The property is bisected by a stream, by a creek, which is the Crumelbo Creek, and that is the dividing line between the town of Hyde Park and the town of Clinton. So that is the zoning line. Okay, so the next slide, this is just an aerial photograph that provides you with a better perspective of the property and the project. So again, the large portion of this project is in the town of Clinton. The portion that's in the town of Hyde Park is on the bottom part of the page, below the red line. So the red line represents the zoning district and also the location of the Crumelbo Creek. This property is landlocked, and so the only portion, or the only access into the property is through the parcel of land that's in the town of Hyde Park. So I'll just say that again. The property is landlocked. In order to get to the property, you need to cross the land that's in the town of Hyde Park. You need to cross the creek, the Crumelbo Creek, and then you can access the property. The next slide is just an overall site plan, we're just kind of narrowing in on the development, potential or the development portion of this property. So this just provides you with the overall site plan. The bottom portion of this drawing, and if I'm going too fast, please let me know, I'm just moving through some of the project portion of it, because we have a lot of slides, but I'm happy to slow down if you'd like me to. The bottom portion of this drawing, again, the bottom part of the map, is Route 9G, and the town of Hyde Park is immediately adjacent to that. So the area that's in the town of Hyde Park is between the creek, the Crumelbo Creek, and Route 9G. So the next drawing, again, we're kind of like narrowing in even closer, and you can start to see the portions of the project, the very limited portions of the project that are in the town of Hyde Park, which are the two ingress egress points. And then lastly, we're going to get down to the site plan that is actually in the town of Hyde Park. So we just really took you from the large parcel and just narrowing down, narrowing down to the portion that's in the town of Hyde Park. If you want to go to the entrance. Okay, so we're going to start with the north entrance. In the town of Hyde Park, we are proposing to modify the existing bridge and existing egress. So there is an existing driveway entrance on 9G, and there is an existing bridge. We are proposing to keep the bridge in the same location and relocate the access drive further north and partially relocate the driveway. We are proposing to modify the bridge, just by widening the decking on the bridge, no modifications to the abutments. We are also proposing to add an additional ingress egress, which is south of the existing egress, ingress egress, and that southerly entrance is being recommended and required by the town of Clinton for secondary means of ingress egress.
Is there a different purpose for each entrance?
Is there a different, sorry, sir?
Is there a different purpose for each entrance?
Yes, that's a very good question. The northerly entrance is the primary entrance, and that is where the guests will arrive, and the southerly entrance is being proposed for deliveries and for emergency services. On this particular drawing where we're showing the north entrance, I just wanted to try to give you a perspective of where everything is. If you can hover by the existing driveway, I don't know if you're, oh, you're not going to be able to do it, okay. So the existing driveway, I tried to provide arrows so that you could see it, is shaded, just to give you a perspective of the de minimis nature of the changes. The existing driveway is shaded, and the existing driveway, again, leads you to the existing bridge. We're proposing to shift the entrance to the north, again, that's under the purview of New York State DOT, and then modify the driveway so it's a more curvilinear shape. It's a safer ingress egress off of 9G, and then continue to access the site through the bridge. All right, the southerly entrance is the next slide. So this entrance was selected in consultation with New York State DOT and with our environmental consultant. This is a new bridge crossing, and this bridge crossing is being selected because it's the narrowest part of the Crumelbo Creek. The bridge is expected to span the creek, and so there will be no abutments in the waterway or in the edges of the wetland. The driveway entrance has been reviewed by New York State DOT, and they've conceptually approved the location of this driveway, meaning the location on 9G. We obviously have a long permitting process with them, but as far as the actual location on 9G, they've already approved that.
Was there any discussion? I see Acker Road there, coming right in there, so you have two exit roads there, what at an angle? Seems like an awkward place.
This is the property that's within the owner's holdings, and so this is the property, this is the location of the driveway that DOT has acknowledged. For whatever reason, this has the optimal site distance and so forth for people who are traveling on 9G.
Okay.
So, so that is the project. I just wanted to give you an overview. That is the project. The project involves simply modification to the existing driveway entrance and a new driveway entrance in Hyde Park.
Understood.
Okay. So we're going to go on to just an overview of the operation, of the applicant's operation and what they're proposing on the piece that is in the town of Clinton. This facility is a health and wellness retreat. It is program and event-based. You're going to hear me say that over and over and over again. And what that means is that there are programs that are offered at this facility, whether they're educational training or classes. Every client is required to select and reserve a program. So in order to enter the site, you need to have pre-selected and been registered for a particular program. You cannot gain access to the site unless you are enrolled in a program. We'll go through what some of those programs are. Program durations vary. They could be a day program, they could be an hour program, or they could be an extended program that spans several days. Overnight stays are not required for all programs. For example, if you're there for a day, you know, you're there for a day program. If you're there for a multi-day program, you are made available, the accessory accommodations that are on-site, they will be made available to you. You can also stay off-site in other facilities located in nearby municipalities. You could stay in another resort or another facility.
Can you register for a day program and stay overnight?
No, you have to, your program that you're registered for has to, if your program that you registered, let's get this out, if the program that you registered for requires an overnight stay, then you can stay overnight.
Why would a program, why would a program require an overnight stay?
If it warrants an overnight stay, sorry, meaning it spans more than one day.
Okay.
And what percentage of programs are under that?
Well, we actually have, the next slide, if you go to, actually has a whole, it's a complicated matrix, so we actually put it down in an Excel spreadsheet. So this information has been provided to the town of Clinton, and it's just an illustrative overview of the types of programs that they anticipate having. We have reoccurring events, different types of activities, special private events, group sizes, location, timing, and frequency. So this is a sample matrix that we wanted to put together to provide you. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
We also provided the town of Clinton, again, this is an application that we submitted to the town of Clinton, mapping showing where outdoor events will occur. And so the drawing on the top, I know these are hard to see, but we did, yes, sir?
Quick question. The X designates a program that is available.
Correct.
Thank you.
On the next sheet, we have just the overview of the locations of events. One drawing shows routine, smaller events that would occur, the other drawing showing larger outdoor events. We just wanted to provide this to you. Again, these are illustrations that are being provided to the town of Clinton in support of the special use permit application, but we thought it was important to provide you with an overview of the programming and the planned events for the facility.
If a one-day program is available and it starts early in the morning, am I required to stay overnight, or can I stay overnight?
I don't know.
The program has to warrant an overnight stay.
Sorry. The program has to warrant an overnight stay.
But, so, so I have a, I have a program, I want to get, I want to get my facial done early in the morning, so would I stay overnight? And you're saying, no, I can't stay overnight?
If the program warrants, meaning it extends more than eight hours, and it requires you to be on-site for, yes, this is the duration? More than eight hours?
We can provide more if you need it, but yes. The concept here is that if you're going for a one-hour mushroom picking class, that does not warrant an overnight stay. You can go visit the property, do your class, and you can leave. If you're going for a three-day yoga meditation series, this is not dissimilar to Omega or Linwood or some of these other places that offer multi-day sessions, then you could stay overnight.
Can you sign up for multiple programs over several days and stay overnight?
I mean, I, we have the applicant here, and we can ask that question and provide you backup. I don't see why you could not sign up for multiple events.
Do you have renderings of what these overnight facilities are going to look like?
Yes.
Yep, we do.
We don't, we haven't included them in this package for you. We can provide you, the town of Hyde Park has received all of the applications that have been submitted to the town of Clinton, so it is on the record. We can provide you with those elevations if you want to see them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
Please.
So again, we just tried to provide you with some example itineraries of what a single day might look like and a multi-day, so perhaps that might provide you with some additional information. But these are just some sample schedules of what it may look like if someone were to arrive on-site.
Question, going back to the, the location of events outside colored, the code, the green and the red, what, I'm sorry, I can't, your print here is small. The green indicates what, and the orange indicates what?
So the green are regular events that are small to medium-sized, and the orange represents larger special events.
And you're defining large as what?
Large is 50-plus people.
50-plus?
Correct.
Okay. I forgot to ask before, you had a, you have a schematic of the, or the layout of the site. How many people are you able to house?
So there, the maximum amount of people that can be on-site is 240. That's being defined by the town of Clinton. There are accommodations for 65 units on the, on the site.
Which would be 130 you could keep, right? How many per unit?
They vary. The units, the unit size varies.
An average?
Two to three.
Two to three, so 2.5, so 60, 2.5 is 120, what, 150?
Sure.
60 times 2.5.
Yes.
Should be 150.
But I think the point is well taken, that there's not, if everyone, at maximum capacity of 240 guests, there would not be enough overnight accommodations for every guest to stay overnight, if every guest enrolled in a program that day wanted to stay. So in that way, it's different than a hotel, where only people that are staying overnight are on the property.
How would, how would overnight accommodation be booked?
That's a good question. If you switch to the next slide, we have how they're booked. So this is how things are booked. Clients have to sign up for an event. At that page. Yep. So clients need to sign up for an event or a program, and so when they register, they gain access to the property when they sign up for that event. Lodging and dining as accessory uses will be made available to clients who sign up for programs.
And I want to add that right now, the facility is operating as a conference center in the town of Clinton. It's been a continuous use for many years. And even though it's now owned by IHG, when you go on the website, in order to book this particular facility, you can't just go to Travelocity and use a pulldown menu, you actually have to call a special number, and they, they are booking it differently at this point in time in a different manner. And so it'll continue to be not just one of the standard properties that you can book through any site. You'll have to register for an event.
You register the programs first, then overnight?
Yes, yes. You will only get to register for the overnight if the program you choose warrants an overnight stay.
Okay.
So there, I didn't provide you with a copy of their website, but their website is up and active, and we can provide that to you, you know, we can provide the location, the link for it in a response, so that you have it. But it is up and active, and you can sign up for-
What's, what's, what is the website?
Oh, the exact name.
It's too long and it's got up.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it. We'll provide it.
It's long.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on. Are there any other questions about the operation?
No.
Okay. I know you may have some in the future, but we'll, we'll move on.
Just one question. You, you talk about the capacity of 240. What kind of event would, would have 240 people there? Would it be a single event?
Yep, if we go to the matrix. We have some special events on the bottom. While she looks up the matrix, it's not usually going to be a single event, it'll be a mix of events. And if you look at the matrix, it's on page 17?
Yes.
Seventeen, okay.
You'll see that they lay out small events that might happen daily, medium events and large events. And so, it'll be a mix of, it will generally be a mix of small, medium, and large events. There may, from time to time, be a large event that, you know, takes up the whole facility, but that is, that's not the usual programming.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, if I come for one day and stay overnight, on average, what would my bill be?
We don't have that.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's America, so hopefully, very high, and they'll pay occupancy tax.
We don't have that.
But...
You don't have that?
No.
Okay. I mean, 750, 1,500?
I don't know. I, I can't answer it. I don't, we, we can get you some information if it's available, but I would imagine it's not yet.
Well, I, I mean, I'd also say it's not really relevant to...
I understand, and as I said, it was my curiosity. I apologize.
No, that's fine, and we can talk after, but...
Okay.
So, your, your question was, what would constitute a large event?
Yes.
That's what your question was. So, on the matrix, you can see there's off-site company outreach projects.
Are you still on 17?
I am.
Okay.
One, if you, if you, Mr. Chairman, if you move over to the center of the table, it says group size.
Okay.
And so, we have small is one to 12.
Ah, okay.
Medium is 13 to 49.
Mm-hmm.
And then, large would be 50 to 100.
Okay.
And so, some examples of the X would be off-site community outreach projects.
Mm-hmm.
If you scroll all the way down on the bottom, corporate retreats.
Mm-hmm.
Family reunions, private meetings and private parties, and weddings or celebrations.
All right, so, if you have a wedding celebration there, isn't that a different event as opposed to coming to just be at this, at the spot?
All of these events are program-related, and so, any of these particular, large events that they occur are program-driven. So, for example, if you have a corporate retreat, it's gonna be program-driven based on whether it's health and wellness, there is a nutritional program that someone, you know, could be signing up for, or they can create a custom program.
Okay, so, if I come for a, a, a executive retreat, I'm gonna have to take one of your programs?
Yes.
In addition to a meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing for a wedding?
Yes.
If I was invited to a wedding, I have to, like, pick mushrooms, or?
Yes.
That doesn't sound like a lot of fun to me.
Well, no, it's not necessarily picking mushrooms. I don't think that this is a funny matter, but it's program-driven. So, there can be nutritional components, there can be nutritional education, there can be a variety of different health and wellness programs that are surrounding that, but it's, they need to be incorporated into a program.
Okay. This, page 17 is very helpful, now that you've explained it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm on page 23, which is, we're entering into a new chapter. We're talking about the submissions that were made to the town of Hyde Park. So, this is maybe a little bit repetitive as far as what the project is, but I just wanna go through this. The applicant submitted to the town of Hyde Park on December 5th for the portion of the project that is in the town of Hyde Park. Again, we provided you with copies of every submission that has been provided to the town of Clinton.
You've seen that.
So, it is on record. Okay, good. It's a lot of material. In December 5th, we requested to be heard on the planning board for the relocated access widening of the bridge that we spoke of, so that's the northerly existing entrance, shifting that entrance using the same bridge. And also, for second access, as we discussed, for deliveries and emergency services. That submission in December also had new signage, so there was proposed commercial signage on 9G. This just provides you with a drawing of what that submission included. Again, this is somewhat repetitive, we did talk about this in the beginning, but I just wanted to provide you with an illustration with this slide. The ZEO response is provided here, and that was in December 21st. And so, the denial broadly stated that the application seeks to establish a commercial use on the land. It constitutes a commercial general use which isn't permitted, and the off-premises commercial sign was not permitted. So, if everyone knows what an off-premises sign is, sometimes you're driving down the highway, and you see a huge McDonald's sign, and you try to find McDonald's, and it's definitely not under the sign. McDonald's is far down the road. An off-premises sign is a sign that's not on the premises that's selling with their advertising. So, since this sign was located on property that's in the town of Hyde Park, the ZEO deemed that it was an off-premises sign, and it wasn't permitted.
But, you do have signs next to the entrances, the two entrances.
There is a sign there now, that is, I believe, was granted under agricultural exemption, so there is an existing sign there now.
Okay. But, you would propose signs, are these electronic?
Uh, no, the sign that's there now is just a wooden sign.
Right, no, I know, I'm familiar with that one, but I'm just thinking, the new signs that you're proposing?
We withdrew the sign from the application. So, the second submission that we made in January eliminated the sign and just saw approval for the two driveways, so to continue the use of the existing driveways.
All right, so, signs are out?
Signs are out.
Okay.
Yep. So, no improvements on the property, other than the relocation of the driveways, which are the ingress egress to the site. The ZEO response to that submission was in February, and it was somewhat new and somewhat inconsistent. So, the decision was that the application for development is for the development of a private road and a new access to accommodate the conference center. Since the town, I'm quoting you, the decision from the ZEO, since the town does not have a separate use for conference center in its zoning definitions, then it's not permitted. The ZEO reviewed the zoning definitions in the code and said the use that most closely is similar to a conference center is lodging. Lodging is not permitted in the Green Belt zoning district, and therefore, the ZEO denied the application. And so, we're here before you tonight to appeal those two decisions from the ZEO.
Okay.
All right, so now, we're gonna talk, if anyone needs a break, everyone's good, we can keep going. Okay?
Good.
Now, we're gonna talk about the appeal. There, I'm on page 30, which is just kind of a summary of our, our application for the appeal. So, there were six reasons why we think that this application is being appealed. The first is the historical use of the property. So, this conference center has existed on this property for almost 19 years, and over those 19 years, there has been no historical objection from the town of Hyde Park and no denial by the town of Hyde Park. The second basis is, and we're gonna go through each of these, the second has to do with the definitions. And so, this is two different municipalities that have two different zoning definitions. We'll go through some of those definitions, and Victoria will speak to this. But, you, you often don't see the same definition in one municipality and the other, and so, we're gonna go over how we think this use most closely fits into the zoning uses in the town of Hyde Park. Third is that the proposed use does meet the definition in the town of Hyde Park, it's not lodging. We believe that it's outdoor recreation, and we believe that it most closely fits with camp. The fourth is that the zoning laws are construed in favor of the applicant. Ms. Polidero will speak to that. The fifth is that the town of Hyde Park's EBA actually has authority to grant relief. And last is, we're just gonna go over a recent approval that was granted, planning board approval in the town of Hyde Park for a conference center, and that is for Camp Victory Lake. Okay, so now, we're gonna just talk about the history of the property. This property, as I indicated, has a long history with the town of Clinton and the town of Hyde Park. There have been numerous applications that have been submitted to the town of Clinton, and the town of Hyde Park has been included as a lead agency, starting in 2005. So, in 2005, the then owners of this property applied to the town of Clinton Planning Board for a site plan and special use permit for a dude ranch and a conference center. So, way back in 2005 is when this started. This application was circulated to the town of Hyde Park. The town of Clinton declared itself lead agency, and this application was submitted to the town of Hyde Park. The town of Hyde Park, yes, sir?
There was some historical restoration during that, too, wasn't there?
Um, historical restoration of buildings?
Yeah.
Yes, of course, included in that project, yes. So, the town of Hyde Park, during this process, they were very active in this review. In August of that year, the ZEO rendered a decision that the town, the applicant did not require any approvals from Hyde Park. So, again, applied in 2005 for a conference center in Clinton, circulated to the town of Hyde Park. The town of Hyde Park deemed that there was no approvals at that time for the use. There was no objection or denial from the town of Hyde Park for the use of the driveway entrance or for the proposed use. In fact, in October of that year, there was correspondence between the town of Hyde Park Planning Board Secretary and the town of engineer regarding this project. And the town of Planning Board Secretary had asked, this application is on the agenda in the town of Clinton, does anyone need to go? And I need to know whether or not they have to come to Hyde Park or not. The town engineer replied, no one is going, there's no physical improvements being built in Hyde Park, so I don't see why they would have to come. Later in that month, the town of Clinton Planning Board approved the special use permit for the dude ranch and the conference center. So, that approval occurred in October of 2005. There was no objection or denial by the town of Hyde Park at that time. Moving forward into 2012, in 2012, the then property owner applied to the town of Hyde Park to replace the bridge. So, there was an existing bridge, I have a photo of it in this rendering that you can see, and they were in need because of, I think it was Hurricane Sandy, they had to replace the bridge. So, they applied to the town of Hyde Park to replace the bridge. That bridge and that driveway accessed the existing conference center. In November of that year, the town of Hyde Park engineer, upon reviewing the application, knowing that that driveway accessed the conference center in the town of Clinton, stated that the plans were suitable for the issuance of a floodplain development permit. So, again, applicant in 2012 applied to relocate that bridge, and there was no objection or denial by the town of Hyde Park at that time for the use of that driveway and the use of that bridge to access the property for the conference center. In fact, I've showed you on page 37, which is the next page, this is a illustration of the plans that were submitted to the town of Hyde Park, and they actually nearly resemble the plans that we're submitting to you today. So, on the left, you can see a little black box, that's the existing bridge. So, you see 9G is on the left, there's a driveway that came in, that rectangle was the existing bridge. If you move to the right, I put a red box around the proposed bridge. So, the applicant was doing the same thing that we're doing here today in 2012. They're relocating the driveway further north, they're relocating the driveway, and they're, they were proposing a new bridge. Again, there was no denial, and there was no objection by the town of Hyde Park for the use of that bridge, the use of that driveway to access the conference center that's located in the town of Clinton. Moving forward in 2016, in 2016, the then property owners applied to the town of Clinton, again, to amend its existing dude ranch and conference center. So, they wanted to expand the use. Again, just like in 2005, the town of Hyde Park was included as a lead agency and were involved in the seeker review of that project. In September, the town of Clinton Planning Board sent the Hyde Park a very detailed application for this conference center. And in fact, the description for that use said, "To amend the existing special permit to operate a conference center dude ranch on the above-named parcel as follows. The amendments we propose are necessary in order to make the operation viable and ultimately successful business that will provide direct benefit to the town." The application goes on in numerous locations, in addition to the EAF and all of the application material, to talk about the fact that this is a expansion of the existing conference center. All of that material was provided to the town of Hyde Park as a lead agency. There was no objection by the town of Hyde Park at that time. In fact, in November of that year, the town of Hyde Park's ZEO sought the planning board's input on whether or not planning approvals were even required. The ZEO sent a letter to the chair of the planning board saying, "Did the planning board take a position on the referral from Old Stone Farm? There is a commercial entrance to be constructed in Hyde Park for access to this conference center facility." The response from the town of Hyde Park chairman states the following, "I spoke with Chairman McCormick, and it appeared that we did not have any action to take. DOT does control that entrance, and as you note, nothing is being constructed within the municipal boundary." The municipal boundary being Hyde Park. I conclude that there was no further action required by our board." So, again, in November of 2016, there was no objection or denial by the town of Hyde Park for the use of the driveway to access the conference center that's on the town of Clinton. In August of that year, in August of 2017, the town of Clinton Planning Board approved that expansion. Again, there was no objection or denial by the town of Hyde Park. Again, in 2023, there was activity with the town of Hyde Park with respect to the bridge. When the new bridge was built, there was a floodplain development permit that was issued, and that permit had not been closed. For whatever reason, it had remained open for many months. And in just, in February, just of last year, the applicant's engineer reached out to the town of Hyde Park's ZEO for guidance on that permit and how to close it. He sent an email to the ZEO saying, "We're positioned to start immediately, and we wanna clarify what you will need from our team in order to issue your own specific permits for construction." The ZEO responded, "I'm using the prior paperwork. If something has changed from the original, we will need to open another permit. If all is the same, we need the paperwork from DEC authorizing the work." Again, no objection or denial from the town of Hyde Park for use of that bridge and the driveway to access the conference center that's located in the town of Clinton. So, just, you know, kind of an overall summary, 18 years spanned between that original application in 2005, and there were multiple applications before the town of Hyde Park to use those driveways, to expand the driveways, to relocate the bridges, and throughout that time between 2005 and 2023, there were no objections or denials from the town of Hyde Park. Okay, we're moving on to the second section, which has to do with definitions and two zoning codes. I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Polidero.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so, you just had a long history of what the project, of what's happened with the property since 2005. So, why are we telling you this, and why are we here tonight? We're here tonight because the town previously identified the project as a permitted use. And so, we are appealing to you to determine whether or not this project fits within the camp and outdoor recreation use categories in the town of Hyde Park. You're on the zoning board, you deal with zoning code, and so, you know that zoning language is unique from everyday language. We don't talk in everyday life like we do in the zoning code. And, you know, people in the audience will have to forgive me, 'cause they've probably heard me say similar things already. We've had many hearings. But, for instance, you're on Facebook, your friend just announces, they, they just purchased a new one-family dwelling. That's what Hyde Park calls it. But, no one's gonna make that in their announcement. They don't use zoning terms in everyday life. They're gonna say they bought a house. We know that a house can house many different uses, and so, we have a more specific term in the zoning code, single-family dwelling. In Hyde Park, it's one-family dwelling. So, in that same vein, when non-zoning folks say something must be a hotel, or must be a lodging facility, as those terms are used in our everyday life, in common talk, just because it has overnight accommodations, it doesn't necessarily make it so. And here, it does not make it so. So, your job tonight is to step into the shoes of the zoning administrator and apply the language of the Hyde Park zoning law, not the everyday language, to this particular project. Although, we believe this project is gonna be a great addition to the community, whether or not you personally like the project is not relevant to this determination that the project is a permitted use. You know, you're bound, as a board member, to apply the zoning law as it's written. Further, it's also not relevant that you don't wanna hurt the zoning administrator's feelings or make her feel bad. It's part of her job to issue determinations, and she does so all the time, and just like that, it's your job to overturn them when needed. So, I just wanna make sure out front that there's nothing stopping you or preventing you from, from nulling the decision as needed.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On page 30, it says, "The proposed use meets the definition, the town of Hyde Park is not lodging," but there's, when it... of town of Hyde Park is not lodging, but there's going to be overnight guests." And I just want to be clear for the record. The property is going to be owned by the largest international hotel in, I think, the world.
Mm-hmm.
But it's not, you're telling me that's, that's not lodging?
So that's a great example of you using lodging in the common, everyday term of, of a lodging facility and not necessarily under the zoning law. And I hear people laughing, but...
No, I'm just, that's why, that's why I asked a question.
So I mean, I can get through the presentation, but let me just give you a few examples of things that also allow for overnight accommodations that are not considered a quote-unquote lodging facility under the town of Hyde Park zoning law. So for instance, a bed and breakfast. It provides overnight accommodations to transient paying guests. However, in the town of Hyde Park, a bread and breakfast is not a lodging facility. It's a bed and breakfast, and it's allowed in the Green Belt District. So they're treated differently, even though someone can put their head on a pillow overnight. Different use. Similarly, a camp provides overnight accommodations to guests. You can put your head on a pillow, but it's not a lodging facility under the town of Hyde Park zoning law.
Might be your own pillow, though, if it's a camp.
Maybe. And it's allowed in the Green Belt District. An educational institution can provide for overnight guests. That would be allowed, but it's not a lodging facility. A hospital can provide overnight accommodations to transient paying guests. But that's not a lodging facility. So the fact that someone can stay overnight, I mean, even a kennel, right? As, as your code defines a kennel, it provides overnight accommodations to transient paying guests. I mean, it's the canine kind, but it's still an overnight guest. So the words here are very, very important. And it's your job to parse the words very carefully and try and determine the intent. So yes, if we were speaking on the street, we would say, oh yeah, lodging, hotel interchangeable. But we're not. We're speaking in a quasi-judicial setting. And you're sitting as a zoning board member trying to interpret the very specific zoning law of Hyde Park. There's, it's its own language, and it, it can't be translated into any other language. So that's what we're dealing with. So I'm just going to go back to the slides. Oh, you have it up. Okay. Wrong, 44. Okay. So I guess I'll start by addressing the issues of, like you just mentioned. What is this project? And I've heard from the neighboring opposition that we might be creating a legal loophole by calling the project different things in different communities. This is not a legal loophole. This is a direct result of how different communities define their own uses and create their own unique zoning laws. Each community basically creates its own zoning language. I was going to reference Esperanto, but then I found out nobody knows what Esperanto is, except for a few nerds like myself. It was intended to be a universal language that everyone could speak. Just like we don't have a universal language in our everyday life, we don't have a universal language in zoning. Town of Hyde Park has municipal home rule authority and has created its own unique set of uses and its own unique set of regulations. So we only have to look to Hyde Park. So do you want to start with, it's a camp? Okay. So Hyde Park and the town of Clinton do not have the same definitions or use categories. The project falls under the use category of a conference center in the town of Clinton. The Clinton zoning administrator, or the equivalent of the zoning administrator in Clinton, has determined that the project is a conference center there. So while Hyde Park does not have its own conference center use, it does fall under the camp outdoor recreational facility uses in the town of Hyde Park. The town defines a camp as, "A facility providing access, water, sanitary and electrical services where persons are lodged, sorry, lodged, for a seasonal or temporary period of time," and this is important, "for recreational or instructional purposes." That last part of the definition, definition is important because it really sets it apart from any other type of overnight accommodation. In order to be at a camp, it is intended to be for recreational or instructional purposes. Instructional can be educational, it can be health and wellness classes, it could be any kind of programming.
Is there a time limitation on when someone can book programs and overnight stays? Can you stay a maximum of 30 days? Can you stay up to six months? What, is it, can you stay beyond that?
Yes, the applicant would, would submit to saying, to placing a, a limit on how long someone can stay on the property. I mean, I, I don't think it would ever be beyond six months or 30 days, for that matter. I can talk and provide a more specific answer. Okay. Let me just make a note.
That's a long facial.
I have three kids, so I would appreciate that, but... So this particular project, as Kelly, Ms. Libel described earlier, fits squarely within the definition of a camp as the purpose of any stay is for recreational or instructional purposes. Although in our everyday life language, you think of a camp as a place where we have tents or mud or fishing, this is not how the term is defined in the town of Hyde Park. It doesn't require camps and it doesn't require cheap accommodations. It's also an increasingly outdated concept as permanent structures and full food and linen service have become the norm for camping activities throughout the Hudson Valley. You just need to drive through Ulster, Green County, Columbia County and see that camping has evolved into, you know, full-service, year-round activities. In Hyde Park, however, sticking with Hyde Park's definition, to be a camp, you must do three things. You must provide basic utility services. You must allow lodging. And it must be for recreational or instructional purposes. This project, as we've described to you, satisfies all three of those criteria. Anyone can stay at a traditional lodging facility. You make a phone call, you book a room, you show up. You can even show up and book a room. But at this camp, at this project facility, it is program-based and only those registered in a program can even gain access to the property. Hyde Park also has a definition for outdoor recreation. It's defined as "a commercial use designed and equipped for the conduct of sport and leisure time activities." Outdoor recreational activities may include other buildings, such as a clubhouse and food, offices, et cetera. Here, there, there is outdoor event programming, as shown on the earlier map provided to you. It could include yoga, equine therapy, hiking, et cetera. And those outdoor programs come with customary accessory uses, food service, a clubhouse to shower, et cetera. So this project encompasses both of these uses, a camp use and an outdoor recreation use, and is properly classified as such. Therefore, the determination should be annulled, and the zoning board must find that the project can move forward with its review with the town of Hyde Park.
Say the three again.
For a camp?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, um, basic services, water, sanitation, electric.
Mm-hmm.
Have to plug in your phones. Allow lodging for a seasonal or temporary period of time. And three, be for recreational or instructional purposes. That is how your town defines a camp.
So that would also be a college.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak, but it could. I mean, it is a broad use. And actually, a little bit later, we're going to bring up another facility that fits within that broad use. So in the town of Clinton... Oh, can we go to the next slide, please? In the town of Clinton, I mentioned earlier...
What page are you on?
This is...
46.
46. That the project there meets this definition of a conference center. So Clinton has a definition for hotel. They also have a definition for conference center. In Clinton, hotel is a building or group of buildings which offers rental sleeping rooms, and it may include other amenities, bars, kitchens, et cetera. A conference center is, it has two sentences. One is "a location for events, for business or professional conferences and seminars, often with rooms for lodging, eating and recreational activities." And then there's a second description of conference center. "It's also an establishment which attracts clients principally for recreational or health activities and contains rooms for lodging and eating for its clients." When we look at the definitions, we're speaking different languages from Clinton and Hyde Park. But we think that Clinton's hotel definition is more analogous to Hyde Park's lodging facility definition. The primary purpose of both definitions is really sleeping accommodations for transient people. You go there to sleep, and if they have a bar or if they have a pool, that's great. But your primary purpose is a place to stay. Conference center, which talks about program-based health and wellness activities, is more akin to Hyde Park's camp definition. So even though different words are being used, the concepts do dovetail with each other. Clinton determined, can we go to the next page, please? I think I went into this already. But Clinton determined that it was not a hotel. And I'm just going to read to you for a moment from their zoning administrator, MCEI's letter. It says, "After reviewing both the initial and amended applications, it is my determination that the proposed use constitutes a conference center as defined in the town of Clinton law. The proposed use fits within the definition's second sentence in that the application states that the site will be used to offer classes and training seminars in the areas of health and wellness. A conference center is permitted to offer rooms for lodging only to clients who participate in its programs. There is no requirement that an activity or seminar participate, I think I should say participant, actually spend the night at the site. The proposed use is consistent with these requirements. My determination is bolstered by comparing the town code's definition of conference center with that of a hotel." And then he goes on to cite the definition of a hotel. And then he compares them by saying, "Overnight lodging in a conference center is limited to seminar and activity participants, while a hotel contains no such limitation." So when Clinton compared their definitions, they found that there was a distinct difference between going to a facility for a program and staying overnight as an accessory to that program use versus going for an overnight stay and maybe using the gym.
Are you saying that the conference center for Clinton is equal to the camp definition of Hyde Park?
I, I'm, I'm not saying they're equal, but I'm saying I, it's the same, I think it's the same intent. They both require health recreation programming. And, you know, can we just actually skip? I think we should go to the other... We can go back. So I, I think it's a good time to bring up Camp Victory Lake. So although Hyde Park doesn't have a conference center use, called conference center use, there are facilities in Hyde Park that have been approved that provide the same function. So Camp Victory Lake is located in the Green Belt District of Hyde Park, just like this project is. This information, Kelly's going to go over it. But it's being provided not to review any particular aspect of Camp Victory Lake's project. That project's not before you. I don't want to get into their details. But it is to demonstrate that the camp use in Hyde Park, as Hyde Park has interpreted in the past, is broad and encompasses program-based facilities like Camp Victory Lake. There would be no rational basis for treating one conference center project as a camp and another as a lodging facility. Both allow year-round events, both have permanent structures for their overnight guests, and both are program-based. You know, the cost of a room or the thread count of the sheets is not sufficient to change the zoning category. So do you just want to walk through?
Sure. We're jumping ahead a little bit, Mr. Chairman. We're on page 55.
Okay.
So we did find on the town of Hyde Park's website all of this readily available information. And this project, again, as Ms. Pollardero indicated, is called Camp Victory Lake. This project is obviously located in the town Hyde Park, and it's also in the Green Belt zoning district. And so when we look at the website for Camp Victory Lake, it's filled with references to conference center meetings and conferences. It offers everything from lodge-style rooms to rustic cabins to seminar rooms to spacious meeting facilities. When you go on their website and you click the button where it says "more retreat and conference center information", you're immediately taken to their next page, which offers information on their services and on their room lodging and option rates. And so the town of Hyde Park, the reason that we're bringing this up is that the town of Hyde Park just recently reviewed this project, and they approved it as a camp and a conference center. And it's very similar to the proposed use that we have...
You mean the zoning board of appeals?
The planning board.
Planning board.
Yes. We just provided you with kind of a snapshot of all of the documentation that was provided to the town of Hyde Park, to the CEO and to the planning board. And so this application started, I think, in 2018. And between a span of many, many years, there's been numerous documents. We just provided you with, again, pictures and references all on the town of Hyde Park's website that repeat over and over again that this is a conference center, conference uses, and of course, obviously, that this is in the Green Belt District. So the, the full environmental assessment form that was reviewed by the planning board in 2021, again, over and over refers to this project as a conference center. In 2022, again, there was a additional narrative that was provided saying Camp Victory Lake is an overnight camp facility and conference center. I won't go through each one of these, but in 2023, an amended EAF, again, references conferences, camps and conference centers, project being in the Green Belt District. Amended again in 2023, camp, facility and conference center. And then in July of 2023, the planning board of Hyde Park approved this project. And so they granted site plan for Camp Victory Lake, which was also known as a conference center. The first paragraph of the resolution states, "Whereas the applicant Northeast Conference Corporation has submitted an application for site plan and special use permit approval for Phase 1 of their master plan for the redevelopment of an existing recreational facility, camp and conference center for the construction of," they go through a bunch of items, "in the Green Belt zoning district." And that is the project. And so, go ahead. Oh, sorry. I was going to say, so the planning board doesn't determine whether a use is permitted or not. It simply processes an application that's been forwarded to it. So in order for an application to be forwarded to the planning board, there would have had to have been an implicit determination, if not explicit, that the use was permitted in the district. So again, this is just going to show that the camp use, as used in the town of Hyde Park, not in, you know, preconceived notions in your head, is broad and can include a conference center use.
Could you go closer to the mic, please? Yeah.
Yes. Camp, camp use is broad in the town of Hyde Park. So we think there's ample evidence here demonstrating that the project, as it's been presented to you, all this information you have, shows that the project is a camp and an outdoor recreation facility in the town of Hyde Park. We also put in our papers, it also has agricultural aspects with equine therapy. It's in the Ag District. You know, there are a lot of reasons why this project is a permitted use in the town of Clinton and is a permitted use in the town of Hyde Park. I don't want to belabor the point because I think we've given you all of this evidence. But even if you disagree that the project is a camp and outdoor recreational facility, the town board has given you additional authority to modify the applicable zoning provisions in this district and to allow a commercial drive and even signage and grant this alternate relief. So I did read Mr. Replansky's argument, where he says the ZBA's power cannot be expanded by the board. But I'm not asking you to expand your power. The town board has already given it to you.
But can a town adopt zoning from a separate town?
So, well, what this provision does, I don't think it's allowing you to adopt the zoning from a separate town. It's, it's actually giving the zoning board the power to modify the zoning, similar to how a zoning board sits and can modify zoning to allow a porch stoop to exceed three feet or five feet. In that case, you're actually modifying the zoning regulations. This is a play on that power, which allows you to say, "On this particular project, where 90% of the project is in the town of Clinton, and only this small piece of the property, 10%, providing access, is in the..." property, 10%, providing access, is in the Town of Hyde Park, we are going to modify the regulations to allow the commercial drive with signage." So, yeah, it's giving the board that power to do that.
You're asserting that this board has that power.
I am asserting that. So it used to be-
That we can change the zoning.
You can modify the zoning. So the way that it's written in the code is that when a property is split by a zoning district line-
Within the Town of Hyde Park.
Well, a property in the Town of Hyde Park, split by a zoning district line.
But Hyde Park zoning districts.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that both zoning districts have to be in the Town of Hyde Park. And if you think, if you think through it, I don't think it matters if both districts are within the Town of Hyde Park, because the intent of this provision is to allow this board to provide some kind of relief. If you think back to when zoning boards were established, when New Clidian zoning was adopted, they created zoning, one-size-fits-all applies to every single lot. And as you know, lots come in all different shapes and sizes, and one-size-fits-all zoning can be inherently unfair if there's no way to grant relief to individual landowners. So that's what this board does. You are a stopgap measure to prevent the zoning from taking, basically taking the value away from someone's property because their particular lot doesn't fit within the zoning code. That's why you grant use variances from time to time, and that's why you grant area variances from time to time. New York State requires that any community that has zoning have a zoning board of appeals. So consistent with this thought, the town board gave you the extra power that when a parcel was split by a zoning line, and it creates this inherent unfairness where 90% is in one district and 10% is in the other district, it allows you to modify the regulations. So we're not asking you to modify the regulations on Clinton's portion. That's outside of your jurisdiction. We're saying that if, in the event, unlikely event, that you don't find that it's a camp or outdoor recreation facility, that you exercise this additional authority that you have to modify the standards in the interest of fairness. You know, you've already scheduled the public hearing. That's what we're doing tonight. You've already given notice. Everyone will have the opportunity to speak, so this is not a separate process or procedure. It's relief that we've requested, and that is part of this current application. In our brief, we've given you reasons why we think you should exercise this power. It's the sole access to the property. It's been used in this manner for almost 19 years with no objection to the town, by the Town of Hyde Park. And it's at the corner and the edge of the Town of Hyde Park, and there are no structures being, being constructed that would actually conflict with the Greenbelt Zoning District. So for all those reasons, we ask you to consider granting this alternate relief. And then, I know you're probably getting tired of hearing from us, I just want to take a few more minutes and talk about what we expect you to hear tonight from the opposition and address some of those concerns. So the neighbors are going to get up, most of them from the Town of Clinton, and they're going to say that, you know, a hotel and a lodging facility is not permitted in the Greenbelt District, and therefore you have to deny the application. But in reality, the road exists, and it provides access to a legally permitted use in the Town of Clinton and a use that is permissible in the Town of Hyde Park, as we've just talked through. They're also asserting that we can't expand a non-conforming use. That is not the issue that we've brought before you. We've asserted that the use is conforming. It may need additional approvals from the town, but we ask that you allow the applicant to go and get those approvals from the town. You're also going to hear a lot of people characterize it as, you know, a very large hotel, massive hotel, luxury hotel. All of these characterizations of size are intended to scare you or sway you, but none of them are relevant, as the definition in Hyde Park doesn't involve a scale. It doesn't, camp is not defined by how many or how few overnight guests are allowed. You could have a very large camp, you could have a very small camp. You could have a very large outdoor recreational use, you could have a very small outdoor recreational use. The definition does not include a quantity. So again, those kinds of characterizations just aren't relevant. You might hear that the non-conforming use was discontinued. This is an argument we've been dealing with in the Town of Clinton. Clinton has stated that the use is continuous. The facility, in fact, continues in operation to this day. So anything going on in the Town of Clinton is just not relevant to this board tonight. You'll probably hear them argue that anytime there are sleeping accommodations, you have to deem it as lodging, but I've already read to you all the other kinds of uses in the town that allow sleeping that don't fall within the lodging definition in your code. And you might hear them use the term self-created hardship. This is a term that comes up in area variances and use variances. It's not a standard in a zoning interpretation, but in any event, if you were to apply the self-created hardship standard, I think you would find that there is not a self-created hardship. The applicants, before they purchased the property, did their diligence. They looked at the history of approvals, and there was nothing to indicate that the Town of Hyde Park would change its opinion on the permissibility of the commercial drive. So for all those reasons, we ask you to annul the determination. We are going to, do you have anything else to add?
No, we can just, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions.
Not right now.
Not now.
So I'm going to request a few minutes at the end, just to address any comments that come up.
Sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
The dining facilities that are on the site, is that a restaurant? Will you be able to order from a menu?
It's not open to the public, well, for guests.
But is it a restaurant? You'll have a menu, you'll have waiters?
Yes. The restaurant is predominantly related to the health and wellness, so it's driven primarily by the, you know, the agrarian use of the property and growing a lot of the products that are going to be used in the foods, and so the restaurant is a part of the program.
Right. Is it private dining, you'll get a bill, or it'll be booked to your room?
Or included in your, I think that there isn't a separate bill for the restaurant, that's just included in your program fees.
Okay. So there's like a meal package that comes with your overnight stay and your program fee?
If you're staying overnight, the food and the restaurant is made available to you.
Okay. Is there room service available?
I don't know. I can find out the answer to that.
Quick question. Can I bring my RV up there if I want to, if I don't want to stay overnight in one of the facilities?
This will be a non-RV facility, but I will tell you-
How about my tent?
I just worked on a project in Sagrades that's been approved called Auto Camp, where, it's interesting, you can look it up. You also cannot bring a tent or an RV there. They have permanent structures affixed to the ground, which are used year-round on a camp facility.
The dining room is not open to the public?
It is not.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Room service, okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Are there any other camp uses in town that are comparable to this proposed development?
So we did provide you with one.
Yeah.
We would have to do a FOIL request.
The one is Camp Victory?
Yes.
Which is a religious organization. You're a for-profit organization.
Sure, but I don't think the religion or the for-profit change the underlying use, which is folks booking a room.
They have RVs and tents.
But they also have permanent, permanent structures for housing.
Not lots, much less than you have.
But they have them.
Is there, is there, is there a membership required of this?
No.
Is there any limit in terms of how many nights I could stay?
Yes, there will be a limit. I will, it's definitely not going to exceed, you know, six months, but it's likely, likely 30 days.
I think that was asked, yeah, and so we will get you the answer.
I'd have to take a program every day or something.
You would have to take a lot of programs, but we will get the answer. You'd look amazing when you come out.
Okay. My face is going to take it here. Let's see if there's any. Okay.
Do you have anything? Is it seasonal or year-round?
It's year-round.
I'm good for now. Okay. Counselor.
Okay. Thank you.
For right now. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I'm just going to take, can we just take a two-minute break? I need water.
We are going to take a two-minute break. Everybody's going to stand up, and we're going to shake. Including me. You guys have been. Let's do exercises.
Yeah, yeah, go take a lap, Rich.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to go.
Unless there's someone who didn't sign in, we can ask if you have.
Some, some rules, rules of the road will help us expedite everybody. First, let me say, we are very pleased to have you here, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say, and we appreciate, appreciate the time that you're making. We are going to have, we have a list of people who are going to speak. Our secretary will announce the person to come up, and we have, because a lot of you have things to say, and I appreciate that, we're going to have about a three-minute time for each of you.
A three-minute time. It'll be on a timer by the vice chair.
This is the clock. Okay. And so we respect that, but we want to, we want to hear from all of you that are, that have signed up, so we look forward to that. Counselor, anything else?
We just ask that when you come up, you speak into the microphone, you state your name and your address for the record. You use your three minutes however you'd like. We ask that no one else speak while each individual comes up and says their piece, and hopefully we can get through this.
Good. Sir?
Can you ask for questions from the-
So we ask that you address the board with your comments. You should not be addressing the applicant at this time. They have no obligation to answer questions. Likewise, the board, you should not, you can certainly ask a question, but the board is under no obligation to answer.
Tonight, we want to hear you.
Okay, first, Donna Burns.
Can you use either the handheld mic or the table mic, but just make sure you bring
it close to your face, please?
Bring it really close.
Yeah.
Is this working? Is that close enough?
That's great.
Okay, great. Hope that doesn't count on my three minutes.
It's starting now.
Okay. My name is Donna Burns, and I live in 92 Coyote Ridge Road in Statsburg, very close to the property where the Towns of Clinton and Hyde Park come together. And I really appreciate being able to speak here tonight and all the work you do for the Town of Hyde Park and for the board, for council, for everybody who's here tonight and here in support of the decisions for, by zoning administrator Moss. I also really appreciate the fact that the Town of Hyde Park has clearly taken the time to divide its town into districts, so even people like me, as well as developers, can figure out what's permitted where, and it should be a model for other towns in this area. Looking at the resort, it's clear that this project is a lodging facility, and I think Ms. Polidore got it exactly right. It offers sleeping accommodations for transient paying guests. I had to laugh when I talked about the dogs, because I don't know if the dog pays or who pays in the kennel. But the fact that they have amenities and programs doesn't change the fact that they have transient paying guests, the fact that they call their resort suites cabins and cottages doesn't change it, because in the Town of Hyde Park, it's really, whether you call it a hotel, a motel, an inn, or another facility, it's, whether or not it's defined according to the transient paying guests. And a simple web search, you can see that they themselves call their six senses hotels, they call it hotel rooms, they have hotels in the pipeline, and no doubt, this would be one of the facilities in the pipeline. The reason the property is in the Greenbelt District is for good reason. It's environmentally sensitive and agriculturally significant areas exactly where this property is located. And I want to just put out something about the recreation. The indoor recreation, the genuine spa that they're proposing, is not permitted in the Greenbelt District. Also weddings, parties, reunions, that's not like any camp I've ever heard of. I mean, they're talking 250, 240, excuse me, guests, and 150 employees, many of them who have been living on the facility. And I do want to talk very briefly about the previous use. It was not a conference center. It was a dead ranch. The Town of Clinton had a law up until 2021 that permitted dead ranches, and that's what it was. In 2005, it was allowed because it was via the existing driveway, and it was a very low-intensity agricultural use. In 2012, that was replacing the bridge. 2016, the Town of Clinton actually denied the application. They wanted to put 250 people there, and ultimately, they got 18 additional people. And I think that's really important to consider when you're considering the whole scope of the project. Am I, am I out of time? I'm out of time.
If you have additional comments, you can submit them by paper to the zoning secretary.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll go into the minutes. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Dan Burnt.
So my name is Dan Burnt. I'm at 239 Schoolhouse Road. Was that enough? Okay. Better? Okay. In Statsburg, and I'm here in support of the zoning board of appeals, past decisions to reject IHG's proposed resort application, and request that we not provide them any special relief. Please don't succumb to the notion that poor IHG was somehow duped and now deserving of precedent-setting special relief. The $16 billion multinational resort hotel company earning over $1 billion in operating profits last year. The Six Senses brand of exclusive ecotourism sustainable resorts has shown a propensity for pursuing development in environmentally sensitive, previously protected areas, including sensitive baylands off the coast of South Carolina. Their sustainability marketing, like touting their onsite organic gardens from their own composting in order to give back to the environment, is laughable.
Two minutes.
Okay. In comparison to the permanent destruction of wildlife habitats, they willfully undertake in order to build lodgings and spas in environmentally sensitive areas. Ecotourism is an oxymoron, trying to fix environmental concerns with tourism is like trying to fix a black eye with a white hook. Now they're looking to pull the same scam here in the Hudson Valley. Thank you for your service, and thank you to others that serve on our local town governments, boards, and fire departments as volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Robert Plattner.
Hi, my name is Robert Plattner. I live at 179 Browns Pond Road, Statsburg, New York. I would just like to support the earlier decision of the administrator. I don't think anything we heard tonight would require changing the mind about that decision. In fact, I think what we heard tonight sort of makes the case of the community that this is not a camp, this is not an appropriate facility under Hyde Park law. The term grasping its straws came to me as I was listening to that testimony. I think it's clear that they're really trying to stretch the limits of definitions to try to suit their purpose, whether it's conference center or camp, and I think the board can stick with the decision that the administrator made, that it's right on the facts and it's right on the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Not sure about the writing. Looks like Mike writes. The address is 7 Stonewall Court. Sorry, if I got your name wrong.
My name is Mike Oates. I'm the president and CEO of the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here in support of the applicant. My address is 7 Stonewall Court in South Salem, New York. I'll be brief, obviously, we only have a couple minutes to talk. I think the applicant's attorneys did a, you know, a very strong job in outlining, you know, the case for, in favor of this project. What I want to do is just kind of stress two major things, one being, my phone is ringing, of course, right now. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Um, it seems that, that the topic at hand is whether or not the, the landlord can cross the property that lies in one zone to get to the same property that lies in a different zone. And, um, this cross, this crossing, crossing, uh, involves bridges because of the natural, uh, natural landscape. The piece of land, um, uh, we're discussing is part of the same parcel and cannot be sold separately. It's the only way in and out. Uh, I hope Hyde Park really considers this sensibly granting access rights to a property that's, that's seen, uh, that has a running business for nearly 20 years, as, as stated earlier. People are obviously concerned about change, uh, but improving and adding to the safety and access of, uh, State Route 9G is good for the community's safety overall. We believe as an organization that this is, uh, a, a strong addition to Dutchess County and the Hudson Valley region as a whole. Uh, we're excited about the, the types of jobs and the types of investment that are coming to the community, and again, we stand in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
John Cordaro.
John Cordaro, 5335 Route 82, Clinton Corners. Just in favor for the project, and one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up is 'cause just living, raising my family, traveling that Route 9G every single day, I think of what could be, you know, of that property and what a developer could possibly do to this property. And I, I get worried about it, as anyone else would be, that if we, if we ever just looked at what, what could happen to a property if they, if, you know, a, a developer decides to put 70 homes on it. And, um, and I think this resort, which is an amazing place, and if anybody has ever stayed at one, it's absolutely incredible, and it's really focused not on the stay, but just the experience. And, um, and it's just, um, to imagine something like this in our backyard is amazing, because it's just an incredible, Six Senses makes such an incredible stay and an incredible just sense that when you're there, you're just, you're just, you're just taken into a different place, and it's just an amazing experience that I cannot tell you how much it, uh, it means to stay at one, and if anybody has the opportunity to do so, they should really experience it. And to have that, that kind of establishment, to be in the, in the, in our neighborhood and our, uh, in Dutchess County, it's really, um, really in favor for it. So I just really wanted to bring that point up, and driving down there, looking at the road entrances that are proposed, and the one that's there right now, I think what's, what's proposed is so much better and so much safer to see vehicles traveling out of it. Um, as I said, I, I travel it every single day, and it just, uh, it just seems like a really sensible plan, and, uh, I hope the board sees that and sees the opportunities that, that are forthcoming. Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Bolt.
It's Denise Boltie with an accent on the "e."
Quote, real quote.
Um, I live 12 Traver Road, Statsburg, New York. It's right next door to Six Senses. So about a year and a half ago, I was called by a very aggressive real estate broker who, if you want a very, you know, your house sold, I would recommend aggressively Wendy Maitland, she's amazing. So she told me somebody was very interested in buying my property and would pay anything for it. So I said, "I'm not interested in selling my property. I, I have 50 acres, and I'm into beekeeping, and I've lived there since 1996." And, you know, and I have nice neighbors. So anyways, she called a couple times, and she was pretty aggressive, and then I went over and met, um, Michael Palumbo, who was charming. They gave me a tour of the property, told me what they were going to be building was a luxury hotel, and it was going to be about $3,000 a night with all kinds of things that interest me. I belong to Mirabou, so, you know, facials, uh, exercising, horseback riding, blah, blah, blah. So, I didn't want to sell my property. We went back and forth, and, uh, finally, you know, I had to block her. I had to block her from calling me and emailing me, 'cause it was, she was very aggressive. And then, um, I called up the town of Clinton and requested, um, to find out what exactly was going on, and, um, I had to fill out a FOIL report. I've learned so much about zoning in the last year and a half. I really have a lot of respect for you guys. It's a tough job, and you're not paid too. I mean, it's unbelievable. Anyway, so, I have an iPhone, like 20. My phone almost crashed with their plans. It was very different than what I thought. It's not a campground, it's a luxury hotel complex. It looks like a college campus. Uh, they're going to be, it's, it's, it's way too much. It's way too much. It's not a dude ranch. Anyway, I have, I've learned a lot from being concerned about the environment. I have, um, water and soil coming over Tuesday to help me plant 90 trees on the borderline to block, seeing all the 5,000, 3,000 square foot cabins are going to be built on my property line, so my beautiful mountain views are going to be killed by all these houses. So, you know, that's where I stand. I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to something being there, but I'm opposed to something being that huge, and they're also going to be taking water and refining it, and you can't refine water, and putting it into Crumelbo, which is going to affect you guys too. So, and the water pollution, the noise pollution, the light pollution.
Sorry, that's your timer. If you have additional comments, please.
And, and I'm also concerned about what insecticides they're going to be putting on the ground.
I'm sorry, if you have additional comments, please submit your writing to the...
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you, and say hello to your bees.
John Vanderly. I hope I got that right.
Hi, thank you for giving me your time. I'm John Vanderly, I live in 58 Biese Hall Road in Statsburg, New York. Lived there for 47 years, and lived at town, Clinton, lived at town Hyde Park, the village Hyde Park. Actually, my comments and more questions that I didn't really get answered today. Um, okay, they mentioned a certain number of accommodations today. I don't know most of these things. I mean, is that the end of it, or are they planning to build more in the future? I mean, do they have any guarantees on, on that? Is it going to grow? And I was told they're going to be cabins. How large are these cabins? And, and, and how many people can they actually sleep? Um, the other thing I want to know is, uh, what is the typical cost for a day? Um, I mean, and so, um, how is this going to benefit the people of Hyde Park and the people of Clinton? Uh, I'm sure we're going to hear about taxes and, uh, all of that stuff, but, I mean, um, I mean, I'm not saying I'm a poor person, but I mean, I sure like to know what, but what it would cost, uh, cost to stay there and how it would benefit me, me and my neighbors, cost-wise. Um, also, the other thing that I couldn't quite grasp was, um, the old center there, uh, the, uh, the previous dude ranch, it had, what I would say was marginal lodging, and, which already existed, and, uh, um, with what's coming up now seems to be much more like, um, as, as everybody says, like some kind of a hotel motel, whatever you want to call it.
One minute.
One minute. Okay. Um, and actually, another thing, um, how many employees are going to be there? And, and how much traffic are they expecting to, uh, to generate from there? And then a real quick comment about Victory Lake, I don't think that's a fair comparison. I believe that was in place 60 years ago. Also, I think all the work that they've done, that was merely to maintain the place, because I haven't seen any real expansion or growth to the place. So, um, I mean, comparing the two, I feel like it's apples and oranges. And, uh, thank you for your time, people.
Thank you, sir, very much.
David Schwartz. Okay. Next is Eileen Tresslavina, if I'm saying that right.
Thank you for your service, and very lucky and very blessed to be living at 10 Spider House Lane in Statsburg, New York, in the town of Hyde Park. And I feel that I'm astute. I'm very, very lucky and very blessed to have a lot of land, and I feel that we're astute to the property, and I'm very concerned about the environmental impact that this is going to have. Um, I also know that since I spent the last six months looking for a wedding venue for my daughter, um, that getting married up here is big business in the Hudson Valley, um, that it's very expensive, a lot of places, and that when they slipped, that they said they were going to have weddings there, that doesn't sound like a camp. And I've never, so far, I think I have never been invited to a wedding where I've had to go, um, mushroom picking as part of the program. Um, so, I'm really concerned about, you know, also, like, I'm very grateful, um, to be involved in organizations that are part of the community, yet I don't get the sense that, um, this hotel is going to be encompassing, uh, part of Hyde Park, part of Statsburg. I think it's going to be out of reach for most of, uh, the population that we have, and I don't get the sense that they're going to be reaching out to the community. We can't even go familiar there, it sounds like. So, um, I, I do support your, your first decision, and I, I thank you, really thank you for your service in, in doing this. I know it's not a difficult work with a lot of difficult decisions, but thank you, and please consider the impact environmentally and also on the community that this facility will have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Rick Perkins.
Are you? That's him. This is Rich Perkins. Hi, Doc. Hi, how are you? I believe we've met before. Hi, I'm Rick Perkins, um, not Rich Perkins, and, uh, I live at 115 Coyote Ridge Road. So I'm the immediate neighbor of the property. I, I've lived there for 20 years, and, uh, I'm raising my family there. I work up at Northern Duchess and Rhinebeck. Um, that was a working farm when I moved there, and I, I remember going to the town of Clinton meeting when they changed it to a dude ranch, and I stood up and I said, "What's a dude ranch?", 'cause I didn't know what that was. And, uh, it's, they had small activities and small things there, and this, you know, what I'm hearing about is, is massive compared to what's been done there. And, uh, you know, I, I'm not an attorney, and, you know, I, I sound, I feel like I'm listening to word games, you know, and, and trying to describe what different words mean and what things are, and all I know is this is a massive thing, you know. At the other meetings I went to, they talked about $3,000 a night, they talked about helicopters, and they talked about, you know, hundreds of people there, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think that's a good idea in this rural area, so I support your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins.
Tess Lampert.
Hi, my name is Tess Lampert. I live at 23 Kirchner Ave, here in Hyde Park. I love living in Hyde Park with my family, and I'm here in support of the previous determination of the Hyde Park zoning administrator. Um, what today is the Green Belt District of Hyde Park was designated as good land in the prehistory of Hyde Park, since before the town of Hyde Park was established, and there has always been an historical effort to honor and protect this land, and that's one of the reasons that we have the restrictions that we do for the Green Belt District. Um, suggesting that a luxury resort where most of the new construction is for elaborate lodging facilities larger than the average New York house size is a camp is absurd, which is why we were all laughing. Um, and I think also the argument that relies on trying to persuade you to suspend your common sense understanding of your own laws is silly and maybe slightly insulting at the same time. Hyde Park has done a really good job of, uh, upholding its own laws and appropriately protecting the Green Belt District, so I just want to thank everyone for, uh, serving the community and continuing to uphold the laws that make a lot of sense for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tess, for your remarks.
Shannon Lasher.
Hello.
My name is Shannon Lasher. Uh, my family and I have a small poultry farm at 106 Forest Drive in Hyde Park. Uh, we're about five miles away from this piece of property, and we're here to express our support for the previous decision by zoning administrator Moss to, uh, not allow this development to continue. Um, there are a couple of words that kept popping up tonight that really stood out to me. Seasonal, that was a big one. Victory Lake is a seasonal camp. Everybody that lives in Hyde Park knows when Victory Lake is open. It's not open year-round. Victory Lake is a small religious area that is kept to the typical idea here in Hyde Park. Um, this, however, is the number one hotel group, excuse me, number one hotel group in the world. Um, these proposed cabins are two to three times the size of my house. It's crazy. And I don't know a single person that's ever going to be able to not only afford to stay at one of these hotels, but travel to one, because there's not even another one in the United States. So why here? Um, the, the rooms are rented, offered for rent to transient, visiting, paying customers 365 days a year. Uh, the Dude Ranch and Conference Center, as was already stated, was historically a farm. It hosted agricultural programs. Um, it was very small. It did not have this expansive destruction of environment, um, putting in all of this new construction where it's not needed. Again, this was deemed good land long before even our president lived here and decreed that all of this land was cared for in an agricultural manner. Um, we talk about, uh, we're talking about, a lot about the Crumelbo Creek being the border. The Crumelbo Creek feeds the water that supplies most, a lot of our town. Uh, our farm is completely supplied by the Crumelbo Creek. I can walk in the woods and go dip my feet in if I'd like. So, that's the beginning of that water supply for our town. In turn, when they have cleaned the water, which will never fully clean it.
One minute.
Um, it, it will all end up in that Crumelbo Creek. Then we will all be the ones that have to pay the prices, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, all the way down the line because of this, this place. So the entire argument to me isn't even relevant. It, it's size is not what matters. It's about protecting our natural resources. This, the town comprehensive plan states that, uh, the land must be able to be returned to an agricultural land as per the Green Belt designation, uh, and by them going in and destroying 200 acres and calling it a program, there will be thousands of cars that cross the Crumelbo Creek every day from that area, going in and out of the public, um, public gym facility where they will have classes, the, uh, different programs that you have to sign up for every hour, three hours, eight hours, tomorrow morning, whenever you leave, then there's all this staff. That's a lot of pollution in the Crumelbo Creek. Thank you guys so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Appreciate your remarks. Thank you.
That was all the people who signed up on the sign-in sheets.
Was there, on both, on both of those?
On both, yes, I got them.
Any other comments? Okay. Um... Someone, we have someone, sir.
Dave, we have one more?
So, if you could just sign the paper?
Yes. This is the guy that brings donuts. The last one here.
Appreciate it. My name is Justin Seeboss. I'm living at 30 Paul Cole Road, about a minute's down the road. Um, my main concerns for the project that is proposed is more of the general consensus that we've been seeing for the proposal from conference center now to a camp, to dude ranch, all those things in between. Uh, if we look at the definitions of our, uh, town codes, our camps are seasonal, meaning that they're less than six months, and I do not believe that the project, nor the well over 200 citizens in Hyde Park and Statsburg and, and Clinton, um, agree that this operation is going to be a seasonal operation. Um, in addition to our, our fellow farmers, as a fellow farmer in the Hudson Valley, um, the land is going to be destroyed and hopefully not be able to return back to agricultural use, which in a Green Belt District is vitally important, um, not only affecting the land use, but the water usage around it, um, and in the proposed 200 acres that they have for the site, the actual agricultural... And in the proposed 200 acres that they have for the site, the actual agricultural area as far as land, that's not timber, is about 20 acres, and that 20 acres is going to be completely developed with specifically lodging and amenities, not necessarily for production in vegetables or livestock or mushroom production or timber, which agricultural productions are. If it's strictly lodging facilities, that doesn't necessarily do anything except grow additional revenue from people, not necessarily the product that we want to distribute throughout the Hudson Valley. So my just consideration is, it's not a camp. It's a conference center. Even the definition of dude ranch is, according to our codes, restrict or classify dude ranch as a conference center as well, from what I've been able to read. So just making sure that we clearly define what these facilities are. But thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Now is your time to sign the form. If not, we're going to cut it off after this individual.
Should you change your mind and wish to say something, you could always send something in.
Yeah, we would welcome any comments, and they will be put in the record. Good evening.
Good evening. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I'm a little bit nervous. My name is James Smith. I live on Slade Court Road in the town of Clinton. I've been resident for 22 years. I've also spent the past 20 years in the health and wellness field. I'm very familiar with seminars and workshops and conference centers and the type of facilities that offer that. And I've been paying attention to this unfolding since October, when there was a public meeting that I attended in the town of Clinton, when questions were asked about what kind of programming was going to be offered, and the person speaking was hesitating, and it wasn't well-planned out. I thought the answers were very weak, about what they're offering, mentioning an hour-long program, beekeeping, mushroom picking. And I think about conference centers, it's the program that is center, and the accommodations are secondary, and the attention people are going there is for the programming. And I'm thinking about this in contrast, that what is the intention? Definitions we read about camps and conference centers, and the, and the purposes to each, but what's the purpose of someone going to this particular facility? Is it to take a workshop, or is it to have a leisure vacation? It reminded me of a cruise ship that offers programming. It's entertainment, but I don't think anybody goes on a cruise to take courses, they're going on it for the cruise experience. And so for me, it all comes down to the intention of people who are attending this facility, and what do they think that they're going to? And I go for question, the definitions of anything other than a resort and a hotel. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think this concludes our remarks tonight. We are going to continue the...
Mr. Chairman, would you like to give the applicant an opportunity to just speak to some of the points that were made on the record?
Sure. Sure.
Three minutes.
I'll try to sit quickly. So I just want to address a few comments that were raised tonight. First, a lot of people have asked you to uphold the decision of the zoning administrator, but we just want to make it clear that the zoning administrator...
Closer to the mic.
The zoning administrator did not have all of the program-based information before her at the time she rendered the decision. She had a site plan, and she had an application. So your decision cannot simply be to uphold her decision. You have to consider all of the new information we've given you, and we've given you a lot of information about the program-based nature of this facility. The last woman that spoke talked about a cruise ship. This is not, on a cruise ship, there are different amenities. This is not somewhere you go for a vacation and you can choose to partake in some of the amenities. The purpose of your visit to this particular facility is for a program. So it is different than a pick-and-choose amenity package. It is a program-based facility. Someone mentioned marketing earlier, that IHG has the word hotel in its corporate name and that it's a hotel group. I mean, you ought to know this, but marketing is not zoning. When we market to people, we use commonly understood terms to draw their attention in. Nobody markets the one-family dwelling. They market a home on Zillow, right? So marketing and zoning are two different animals, and you can't look at the marketing of a facility to understand how it's actually going to be operated under the particular zoning code. That being said, this particular facility and the Sixth Sense brand will allow it to be a unique facility. There are no other Sixth Sense's in America at this time, and so they have the flexibility to open the facility that they want, which is a program-based facility. And so this is not fitting into, you know, a chain hotel model. This is a unique facility, unique to the towns of Hyde Park and Clinton. I just want to clear up some other misstatements. There's no record of a denial in 2016 about a prior project. I don't know where this is coming from. The applicant amended the application probably to make it, it may have been to make it easier to get through the process at that time. There's also, has never been talk of helicopters. It's just not something that's before this board or the board in the town of Clinton.
Actually, you made a joke about it last...
Okay, I think you made a joke, but it was intent. It's not on the menu, so to speak. As far as this idea that camps are intended to be seasonal, that's not what your zoning code says. Seasonal is used as an example of the type of stay, so someone could stay at a camp for a seasonal period, which is why we were talking earlier about the duration of a stay, so someone can stay there for a season. But that doesn't mean the camp cannot operate year-round. So that's an important distinction as you work through this issue. I also want to point out that although the project site is 200 acres, the area of disturbance is 32 acres with only one acre being new disturbance. There is a misconception amongst the public that there's going to be clear cutting of trees and a lot of disturbance. That is just not the case. This project has been cited so that the cabins fit on already disturbed land with only less than one acre of new disturbance to the project site. So you have the site plan in your materials, you can see that the majority of the site will remain wooded. Also, someone asked about a restaurant. I just want to point out that there's not a public restaurant because the zoning does not allow a public restaurant. It's not that the property owner wants to create this exclusive place, it's that the zoning in Clinton and the zoning in Hyde Park don't allow restaurants in their respective zoning districts, and hence, a public restaurant's not allowed. All of the other issues about traffic and noise, those will all be addressed by the planning board, as you know. So your job really is to decide if in the first instance, the use is permitted, and then it'll go through the regular review process where everyone will talk about noise and stormwater and all of the other impacts. So I want to thank you for your time. We did hear from a lot of people tonight, and we are ending earlier than expected, so I am going to ask that you close the hearing, but leave it open until May 10th for written comments.
We are going to continue the public hearing because I think the lawyer, Mr. Ruplansky, had some comments, and he was not able to be here, so we will continue it to the next planning... I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we continue the public hearing until through May. Is there a second?
May 22nd.
May 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody. Appreciate your coming out and your comments.
Would you like to adjourn the meeting?
A motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, good. Now we can go home.